Start this meeting by having our Chaplain prayer and pledges. So will Marcella and Gary Jenkins, please come forward and lead us in those two actions.
Good morning, Mayor and members of the council and everybody. Will you please join with us in a word of prayer. Precious Father in heaven, we bow before you, seeking your wisdom, your counsel, and your guidance to be with us as we start the business of the city today. We pray that you give us wisdom to handle all of the business that's on the agenda and help us as a community to stand together, God. We thank you, dear Lord, for our city. We thank you for our city council members. We thank you for our mayor and all of those that are in governmental positions. And we pray, God, because your word says, "The powers that be are ordained of you." So this city council and our mayor are agents of your ordination. And we ask you then to guide them and to lead them. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal and just for all.
I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We have two proclamations this morning, and the first one being the proclamation of recognizing the city of San Angelo's animal services and Concho Valley Paws for making San Angelo a no-kill community for fiscal year 2021. I know there's some folks here who'd like to come up and accept this proclamation. So come on up and I'll read it. And come on, Megan. The chambers is gonna look pretty empty when you all leave. The city of San Angelo with rescue partner Concho Valley Paws set a goal to become a no-kill community in 2015. Staff from both organizations have since worked to ensure no healthy or treatable animals die. Animal euthanasia is now limited to terminally ill and those dangerous to public safety. Concho Valley Paws provides for the medical care of shelter pets so that animals no longer die for treatable illness or injury. The death rate has decreased from over 67% to under 10% of all release outcomes. San Angelo has been recognized by American Pets Alive as a community that saves animals deemed healthy, treatable, and/or able to be rehabilitated. No-kill communities employ many strategies from progressive return-to-owner practices to preventing disease with revised medical protocols and transporting of animals to reputable rescues in areas that are already no-kill. Adopting a life-saving vision at all levels empowered staff to scrutinize protocols to ensure the live release of eligible animals. Our partnership relies heavily on community support to foster animals and provide enrichment to sheltered animals. Concho Valley Paws food pantry and spray neuter programs are a resource for families in need, meeting pet owners where they are to ensure responsible pet ownership for the life of the pet. Now, therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim, "We are a no-kill animal community for fiscal year 2021 in San Angelo, Texas," and recognize the significant strides made in the past six years to achieve this designation and join with all staff and volunteers to celebrate this momentous occasion. Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This has been quite a journey. It's something we're all very proud of. I'm grateful to council and management for your support and all the resources allocated to our programming to make such a drastic turnaround. I was a volunteer over a decade ago and never dreamt that I'd be able to be in this position, to see this journey through. I'm grateful for our partnership with Concho Valley Paws. We absolutely could not have done it in a vacuum. It's a community effort for both groups to come together. I could not be more proud and grateful for our staff. We've asked them to do things that at times seemed impossible, and they've done them. So, thank you so much.
We're very grateful to be here and very grateful for this recognition. And this was something that, you know, 10 years ago, like Morgan just said, people were saying would be impossible. So, but here we are today. And I think it's really important for all of us to celebrate this, but also recognize that no-kill is not a destination. It's a way of doing business every day. It's a decision we have to wake up and make every day because it's going to be an ongoing struggle to maintain this. But it's important to know that everybody in our community can do something to help, whether it's volunteering or fostering a pet, donating, and especially getting your own pet spayed and neutered. So, we're grateful to be here, and it's amazing to be a part of this amazing group of really hard-working people that made this happen. Thank you.
Substance abuse disorders particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources are children and is a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. It is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. It is the goal of Red Ribbon Week and Aid Act to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. For all these reasons, the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council for the Concho Valley and Concho Valley Cares is asking the residents of San Angelo to observe Red Ribbon Week. The Red Ribbon Week campaign promotes family and individual responsibility for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without the illegal use of drugs. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the city of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim October 23 through 31, 2021, as Red Ribbon Week in San Angelo, Texas, and call upon all residents and organizations in the city to support and increase community awareness and prevention efforts in our community.
All right. My name is Jennifer Flores, and I work with Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council for the Concho Valley. I have with me a part of my team, the Community Coalition Partnerships. And we serve the Concho Valley right now. We just really want to thank you for coming out and council members and Mayor Gunter for allowing us to proclaim Red Ribbon Week again this year. It's a, one of the busiest years, one of the busiest parts of the year for us. And I want to give another special thanks to the rest of our prevention team. They are out right now, serving outer counties, local districts, and giving the true meaning of Red Ribbon Week and just being effective in our efforts of reducing substance use disorders among our community. And if you want to be a part of that or just stay updated, please contact us at our main office or follow us on social media, and we'll get back to you. Thank you.
We're gonna have a picture, but if you turn around, there's a little something in your hair and I'm gonna take it there. Okay, let's go have a picture. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. At this point, are there any, is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward
Good morning. I do have a handout. My name is Lylee McCallum-Bee, and I live at 5107 Longdale in North Angelo. I know that you as a, I'm sorry, thank you. I know that you as a city council are not responsible for the medical community in our area, but I would like to use this opportunity in this public forum to bring some information to you as city council and also hopefully to our community as well. I have information, and I've given the handouts, and this is about early treatment, early onset treatment of COVID. This is a, this is a life and death matter. Goes along with the theme of today is about San Angelo being a pro-life community. So this, this does play a part in it. And it's unfortunate that a lot of our medical community and its staff either is not aware of this information or chooses not to bring it forward. So I'm, I want to, I want to help our community in this. The handout that I've given you includes a list of doctors, and these are credentialed doctors that support early onset treatment. No longer do you, should we be sent home and told, "We'll come back when you get sicker." Because at that point, it may be too late. I mean, it may be that your only option is a ventilator and, and a hospitalization and room disappear. And when you get to that point, the odds aren't very good of survival. So I really want to be an advocate for this early treatment protocol. And this is not the only protocol. There's a lot of information out there, but I, this is pretty concise and well-read, well, easy to understand. So, and it talks about even a prevention, you know, how important the immune system is and the vitamins that you can take and the supplements that you can take to build your immune system, to ward this off. And if you are diagnosed with it, even if you're not showing symptoms, you should, you should be treated early. Matter of fact, I quoted one of the doctors as saying, "Treat first and test later." That's how critical early treatment is. So, you are influential, you are pillars of our community, so I want to present this information to you, and hopefully you will give me advice or help me disseminate it throughout our community. And as, I'll be, if I, on your off time or whatever, you, you want to contact me to discuss this further or have questions, my contact information is on there. So, I would welcome any discussions with that. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Lylee.
Good morning. I'm Kimberly Mull. San Angelo's been my hometown since 1977. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today, and I really admire the order and respect you've required in these meetings. Today, I want to remind us that in our great country, slavery was once legal. It was common, it was acceptable, and it was still wrong. As people moved towards eliminating slavery in our land against great opposition, people wondered how they would cope without slave labor. Thankfully, brave people stood up for what was right, and they accomplished it, and our nation is better for that. Our culture has become accustomed to killing babies, sometimes for convenience, sometimes out of perceived need. We would not accept the argument that someone really, really would have a hard time if they didn't have slaves as an acceptable excuse today. Yet this argument is being offered by those who want to kill babies. The discussion that unborn babies aren't really humans reminds me of the wrong and ugly argument that people used to have, that slaves weren't really people who deserved equal rights. No human should be considered property. No human should be considered simply a clump of cells. Every living thing is by definition a clump of cells. We all agree that eagle eggs or turtle eggs are life and should be valued and protected. A human embryo is not actually confused with a wart or a tumor. I believe that the actual conflict over how we deal with the consequences is how will we handle it if we muster the nerve to do the right thing and end abortion, exactly like those who wondered how they would produce tobacco or cotton if they didn't have slave labor. There must be solutions, humane solutions. I'm thrilled that Texas is spending $50 million a year for alternatives to abortion for those having crisis pregnancies. Money will be spent on food, clothing, housing, education, adoptions, both during pregnancy and for years after the baby is born or adopted. I'm proud that locally, our Pregnancy Help Center, without any government funding, last year provided free pregnancy tests, ultrasound, counseling, parenting, and life skills coaching for classes, and all the things mamas and babies need, including diapers, food, clothing, furniture, to almost 1,000 people as they have for the past 30 years. This proves that our local pro-life community isn't simply trying to eliminate options for women, but actually, physically, financially, offering real solutions to very real challenges. We all respect the courageous people who were part of the Underground Railroad and eliminated legal slavery in America. I'm proud of the accomplishment that we are in San Angelo for having a no-kill humane society.
If you could wrap it up, please.
The movement to end abortion, at least in San Angelo, is awesome. This is legal, it's right, it's important, you can do it, and I hope that you will. Thank you.
Any further public comment today? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section of the agenda, and we will move into the consent agenda. I'm gonna start by asking Tommy if there's an item he would like pulled from the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor, item F.
Okay, Tom.
I was gonna pull F, but Tommy beat me to it.
Okay, Harry.
And likewise, my two predecessors, so I'm good.
All right, and Lane.
After that.
With that, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item F?
So moved.
So moved by Tommy, seconded by Lane. Any public comment concerning the public, the consent agenda at this point? With none, we'll take a vote. May I have a vote on consent agenda with the exception of F? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes five to zero. We will go to item F, which is consider approving change order number two to ES-01-21 Southwest Boulevard Improvement Project, Reese Albert Incorporated, increasing the total contract amount by $381,942.12, bringing the new contract, contract total to $7,44837.11, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Tommy, you asked to have it pulled, so I'm gonna go to you first.
Thank you, Mayor. Patrick, I'm sure this might cover a lot of the questions up here. Just bring us an update on why it's taking so long, when we can expect like the Southwest and Sherwood Way to be completed, and just give us kind of a, an update on what's going on within the whole project, as well as what the, the increased $381,000 is about.
Definitely, Tommy. It's, it's no secret that when we, there's two guarantees when you start a construction project. It's gonna rain, and you're gonna find something underground that you didn't know was there. And those are the two primary factors for why this project is delayed longer than what our initial expectation was, especially when we're talking about the two intersections, Southland and Southwest, as well as low-water crossing there at McDonald's. Reese Albert got started on that, and then, just like we said, it started raining on us, which gave us some delay in those projects. And it's not just the day that it rains. Whenever it rains, it does have an impact on work that's already completed, so you have to rework those areas. In addition to that, there were some underground utilities that we came across that had to be adjusted, and Atmos gas line was adjusted. It rained, it floated it, and so they had to redo that work all over again. In addition to that, Reese Albert is, we are not their only customer. They do have other jobs going on. So they had to pull some of their concrete crews to go work at, perform some work out at the airport that they were behind on. So, the culmination of all of those is what's delayed this project longer than what the initial press release said it was gonna be. So, when we're looking at the Southland and Southwest intersection, we are expecting an end of November deadline to finish that up. The crews are back working over there, so there is gonna be progress being made there. When we look at the low-water crossing, we're looking at about that same timeframe of finishing that up, you know, pending no other unforeseen delays. So, what's before you today is a concrete, changing the scope of work from an asphalt paving over to a concrete paving. It's no secret that right there at that Southwest intersection, it's been a horrible, horrible roadway. It's hard to drive on. And so what we want to do is mitigate that. And the best way to mitigate that in the future is putting in a more substantial paving surface, which is concrete. It's an added cost, we know that, but the benefits there, staff believes, meet, meet or outweigh that cost moving forward. What we, the last thing we want to do is build a project that then fails and doesn't meet the expectations of the taxpayer. So we're doing that. They are still working down by Cavenders. They're doing the, they're stabilizing that second lift of that northbound lane. Once they get that done, they'll be, they'll be come through and pave that area. So, there is progress being made through there, so. But I don't know if that answers your question fully, or if you'd like some more detail.
That, that answers my questions and the questions that citizens have had of me. Do you even, would you even, even venture a guess as a possible completion of the entire project? Are we looking at another 60 days possibly, 90 days?
Like I said, those two intersections are the major, the major work going on right there. So, when we finish up those two, that Cavenders area will also be kind of finishing up in that same timeframe. So, the end of the year is kind of what we're expecting to substantially complete that project. Obviously, there's gonna be a punch list that's always involved in every project, but we would hope by the end of the year that Southwest is, is substantially complete.
Thanks, Patrick.
Tom.
Patrick, I'm gonna go a little further in the detail on this. It's an additional $381,000. So the question's been brought up and discussed, and Larry Miller brought it up with me. Are we taking the original bid of the concrete cost out and then adding, excuse me, the asphalt cost out and adding the concrete onto it? We're not just taking and throwing the cost of the concrete on top of the asphalt?
No, sir. You are exactly correct. So, what that $381,000 is a net result of a reduction of 52.9 of the cost of asphalt, the pavement, the asphalt product itself, and then an additional 434 for the, the concrete, the rebar, and the, and the installation of that. So it is a net.
It's basically 10 times as much to put in concrete.
It does. That's why we don't, that's why we don't do concrete roads only in specified areas where the benefit is, is necessary for that.
I'm good with that. That answered my question, exactly. And if Larry Miller, if you're watching, there's your question.
Harry, did you have a question?
Just, I, just a real quick comment, I guess. I understand the cost of concrete is, is higher, but there are certain places in this community that we're gonna use, have to use concrete. I guess my question is, is why didn't we anticipate this at this particular intersection when we did the engineering 18 months ago or 12 months ago, whatever that was? I mean, we know what the traffic is there, and we know what that impact is in that particular part of the community. I guess, I wonder why, and I, and I can play Monday Morning Quarterback all the time, but there are other places in the community that we've got similar situations. Can we get ahead of the curve? And I think that's what I'm asking.
Right. And, and we did, Harry. Staff had directed the engineering firm to place concrete as the paving surface in that particular area. We review those, those plans several times, and they come back. And a lot of times, there's so many changes when you come into that, that what you've already reviewed and what you've already commented on, you know, you, you don't necessarily give the impetus to that. You look at the new things that were changing, and you focus on that. Somewhere along that line, it got flipped back over into asphalt versus concrete paving. And we didn't, we didn't notice it until we were about to lay, and now. Had that been an original part of the bid like staff had requested, we would have recommended it and approved it with the, with the original award in the original bid. So, this is doing nothing but going back to what staff had requested, be in the plan specifications already. So this isn't a change after the fact. This is, this is correcting what had, had dropped through the, through the design and the review process.
The good news is you caught it before you laid the asphalt.
Amen.
So, that's the positive.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, with that, may I have a motion for approval?
So, so moved, Mayor.
All right, a motion by Tommy, a seconded by Harry. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion passes five to zero. With that, we will move into our regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are accepted from the time limit above and must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. The first item is item A, consider approving buy board contract 597-19 for the purchase of one street sweeper from Timco Incorporated in the amount of $286,209 utilizing stormwater fund balance. Ryan, you're on.
Good morning, all. I'll be fairly brief. We're requesting the approval of the purchase of one street sweeper, as mentioned in the caption, for use by the stormwater division, utilizing stormwater fund balance. If approved, this new unit will replace one existing unit within that department. This typically is a standard annual practice for us, and you normally see this on the consent agenda. However, because of the funding source, we brought it to you during the regular agenda so it can be considered and questions asked, if any.
Certainly, we need a new one, but what happens to the old one? Do we still use it in case of emergencies, or what happens with it?
We will be replacing the unit, and that typically will go through our surplus property auction, so we will dispose of the unit.
Any further questions? With none, may I have a motion for approval? So moved by Lane, seconded by Harry. With that, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say, I mean, yes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes five to zero. We will now move into item B, consider approving the purchase of .34 acres of property adjacent to the Kid, Kids Kingdom Playground from Vosburgh Place Partnership in a total amount not to exceed $47,500, utilizing general capital fund balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Carl, you're on.
Yes, Carl White, Parks and Recreation. Ryan, if you could forward the slide, please. Quick orientation about where the property Quick orientation about where the property is. This is the Kids Kingdom Playground. This is Cunningham. It is about a third of an acre. That's part of the Vosburgh Place. This property here, the shape of an L. The owners want to sell the property that's outlined in red.
Does that include the Boy Scout? Is that the Boy Scout building?
No, that's a little bit, another block down.
Okay.
This is the YMCA. This is Concho Avenue. And, next slide, please. This is a look at the property, basically from Cunningham towards the Kids Kingdom Playground. Next slide. This is looking back towards, over the property, back towards Cunningham. And this is looking basically from the Kids Kingdom Playground back towards the Vosburgh Place over the property. Next slide. Part of this item includes authorization to adopt a resolution for the budget amendment. Next slide, please. At a cost of $47,500. We think it's going to be less than that. The property itself is $44,400. With the survey and the closing cost, it's going to be under that figure, but that's, that's what we're asking for. It's about a third of an acre. It's a lovely green space with turf and mature trees. We think that the additional property will enhance the park. The upcoming need to replace the Kids Kingdom Playground is there. That was a community-built playground in 2003. It's a different kind of playground, and it is a little more higher maintenance, and we've kept up with it, but it's seen the end of its life. It does need to be replaced in the next couple of years. So we think this property will definitely enhance that property, the, the entire park, as we re-envision the, the new playground. We see this basically as an opportunity that won't come up again. We didn't ask about the property. The owners of the Vosburgh Place want to sell it. It is currently listed on the tax rolls for $109,000, and it's appraised at $74,000, and they're offering to sell it for $44,400. So we see this as a one-time opportunity to be part of this park, and keep and enhance that green belt that's along the river. It also enhances downtown.
You plan to keep it as a green space, as is?
Yes. As, as we re-envision what's there, we'll definitely keep the parking area. We think it, it serves well as a definite nice green space that would basically just have connections to the, the park and the playground, maybe have a picnic area, but no structures, no, no heavy development. Keep it as a green space.
Are there further questions for Carl from Council? With none, then may I have a motion for approval?
I'm moved.
Moved by Tommy, seconded by Tom. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes five to zero. Last item on regular agenda is first reading in public hearing to update the budget ordinance to modify the fire department position classifications. And we have Fire Chief Brian Dunn here today.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Fire Chief Brian Dunn. What I've sent before you is to upgrade one driver position to the position of lieutenant. All this is done internally. I'm not asking for any funds or any new positions. I will make that position a supervisor. I will bring them to the floor to have one on each shift to do what's called QA and QI, which is quality assurance and quality inspection, which we're required to do by the TAC on 15711. So it's basically a housekeeping issue for us. Other than, because we're civil service, it would have been done internally and moved on, but the, those positions are numbered by ordinance, so.
We have questions for Brian. I see none. So with that, may I have a motion for approval? A motion made by Lane, a seconded by someone on that end, Tommy. And with that, may I ask for any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes five to zero. We will now move into closed session, the executive session on the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D, Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections: A, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Potential Settlements Related To The Loss Review Committee, and Item B, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Miller Versus Weber. With that, we will adjourn. This meeting back to order at 9:56 a.m. And with that, I am going to let Tommy make an announcement.
Mayor, I move that we authorize the city manager to negotiate and settle Miller et Al versus Weber et Al for an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Do I have a second for that? Second by Lane. Any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero. Item 8B, consideration of approving various board nominations. The Airport Advisory Board, Mark Clark, SMD III to first full term, and Robert Frank, SMD V to third term, both ending October 2023. And the Zoning Board of Adjustment, Julie Efferson, Mayor Pro Tem, Alternate II to an unexpired term ending January 2023. May I have a motion for approval of those two?
Second.
Any, any public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, item B, passes five to zero. Are there any announcements in consideration of future agenda items? Hearing none, we will ask for an adjournment.
We adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:57.